Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. This is a City Council Committee of the Whole meeting to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And first of all, I would like to thank the administration for putting together some information for us to get us up to speed with, you know, what's been allocated, what's gone out the door, what we still have floating around out there. So for starters, if you'd like to...
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to do a quick overview and give you some background information and then leave you to discuss it. So the city received $7.3 million from the American Rescue Plan Act, and that was to be used to support our response to and recovery from the COVID-19 public health emergency. The funds have to be obligated by December 31, 2024, and fully expensed by December 31, 2026. The guidance has been updated several times over the last two years, most recently November of 2023, specifically for the definition of obligation and discussion about subrecipients and beneficiaries. So when that happened, it kind of led us to scurry to see projects that we had slated for, already designated for ARPA funds, whether or not they would be obligated. And it happened to be a budget time, so we decided to wait and ask council to wait and hold their meeting till after, and we can do some research. So this is just the summary. Again, the 7.3 million, of that 7.3, 6.9 million has been designated primarily by legislation or voice vote of council. So it leaves the 379,000 left to designate. Also of that designated portion, 6.4 million has either been, already been expensed, or we know will be obligated by 12/31 this year. And you have the worksheet, your worksheet that looks like this. You have two copies. One is updated because we realized some of the things could be obligated by December 31, so I added them to it. And so what we don't know for sure will be obligated is 446,000. So that's kind of where we need to consider tonight. And just for reference, under the new guidance, the term "obligation" means an order placed for property and/or services, and entry into contracts, subawards, and similar transactions that require payment. So that's the definition we were working off of.
So it's not just enough that we say we want to allocate funds to something? There's more to it than that, and that has to be nailed down before the end of this year?
Yes, correct. And I think a lot of municipalities, we're thinking a simple purchase order. We put something on a purchase order, and you set it aside was going to suffice, and the guidance doesn't say that that's possible. So it specifically should be under contract or no, already expensed before 12/31. But if it's obligated, it's safe. Funds that are not obligated by 12/31, and then we get through to the 2026 deadline, they will be, have to be given back. Another caveat is if you obligate it now, if it's under contract, something happens in the next two years, that that contract defaults on either side, we don't have the option to re-obligate or recontract. So we really kind of wanted to get it all out in the open tonight. This here is a replica of what you have in your worksheet. It shows in detail the detailed designations, the amount expensed, and then we have that obligated by 12/31/24 column. So really, what we're looking at is that balance column. And I do want to point out, in the obligated by 12/31/24 column, those two negative 5,000 numbers, we were counting on some of the overage from the Marx project, the 10669 to cover that. If that doesn't get approved, we will have to find another place to expense those funds, most likely a general fund. So I just want to make sure everybody knew that. So when the guidance was updated, it led us to work off this worksheet, and we reviewed the designations, and we started looking for ways to protect the projects that were already approved by council and still be in compliance with the guidance guidelines. So with that, we are recommending to reallocate amounts here that aren't guaranteed to be obligated by 2020, 2031/24, to programs already approved and designated by council. And, sorry, got a thing here. And to reallocate from, to capital expenses and reserve, moving those ARPA funds to reserve And if we do that, that shortens up our little spreadsheet here to this. This is what we need to consider. These are the amounts that are either not obligated and then not designated. So in short, council would need to designate the 379,000 of ARPA funds, and I think there's a working list here somewhere on that. And then, once you've made that decision and authorized to relocate for capital and reserve funds, appropriate all the ARPA funds. That's all I have. Questions and discussion?
Okay. So we had previously allocated or designated 150,000 for pickleball and 150,000 for dog parks. Although these have not been obligated yet, is there reason to believe that they will be obligated before the end of the year?
I think there's been some organization, there's been some movement, but I can't confirm that. So that would be one of the projects that we would spend 150,000 that we had budgeted, say, in a capital fund. We're paying for a fire truck this year that we can use ARPA funds for. Spend that 150 of ARPA funds on that fire truck, and from that capital fund, move the 150 to reserve, to know, for council to spend on the dog park or pickleball by 12/31/26.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Dana, going along with what you said, it sounds like, yeah, moving funds from one account to another, that would be less restrictive. For example, if the pickleball or the dog park isn't ready to spend all of that money, we don't want to lose it. So what you're saying is, your example is a fire truck. So you say, all right, well, we'll move the 150 dog park into capital, and we'll move, and then, I guess, in a sense, in a sense, move where we would spend 150,000 into capital. And then buy the fire truck, which, for 150,000, that would be not quite enough.
Towards a fire truck.
Yeah, to buy that with the ARPA. What that does, then, is everything's being bought that would have been bought or allocated that would have been allocated, but we have more time for getting things ready for the dog park and the pickleball court. And we wouldn't have the obligation of, by the end of this year, or even by the end of 2026. You'd put it in reserve, so whatever transpired, hopefully, it'd be quicker, but it wouldn't be the pressure to get things done. Is that pretty much what you said, but in many more words?
Basically, we would expense straight from the ARPA fund. We wouldn't move ARPA funds into a capital fund.
Right, right. You'd move the project into the capital.
But yes, then we would save that 150 that would have come from our capital fund in a reserve fund, and that is allowable. We are recommending that we try to spend it all before 12/2026.
Right.
But I think this is the best way, with the guidance, to protect those projects that are already designated, that have been sitting there on the table, and we know that they were important at the time they were designated, and we know that we want to get them finished. This seems like the best way to still be in compliance with the grant and get those projects done that were already designated.
The only downside to that would be if, for some reason, moving it from ARPA into the capital reserve, someone changes their mind later and says, well, we don't want to allocate 150 to pickleball or something. Is that, pretty much, what I can see is the only downside, if we were going to spend the money anyway.
It would still be in a reserve fund. I imagine you could pass some type of caveat that, when it came time to spend that funds, and maybe Lori can speak on that.
Yeah, when we hold money in reserve funds, it is with that designation. So again, council sees that as part of our financial reporting, so it would require a council action to change that, meaning that we would need to publicly discuss that. So we would, you know, recommend that it be used for that which it was designated. But it would protect it under that category.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Joe?
So I guess I'm wondering why we wouldn't just get this money out the door now. I believe when the funds were allocated, using pickleball, for example, that was a matching grant. It's my understanding that they have exceeded the amount of that grant in their fundraising. If we were just to grant the funds now to the nonprofit entities that we have already agreed to grant these funds to, would that not fulfill our obligation to obligate the funding?
It would, in that scenario. It's my understanding that the Parks Foundation, with our 150,000, have about 280,000. But they then would fall under certain categories as a subrecipient, and they would have their own guidelines they have to follow, reporting, that kind of stuff. And we would have to make sure we had a category besides our general revenue loss category to report as the use of ARPA funds, because for the general revenue loss category, which is what we're classifying everything, because you can spend anything you would charge to the general fund on it, and we're within that $10 million of the guidance, that pickleball project would have to fall under one of the other categories, which are more specific to the COVID-19 health emergency. I don't have the whole list here, but it would have to fall under one of those categories.
I think grants to nonprofit entities were presumed valid. Wasn't that right?
That's not my understanding. I can't tell you one way or the other.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I guess we would need clarification on that. My understanding was that grants to nonprofits were presumed safe uses of these funds, and, you know, the Parks Foundation, for example, would satisfy that.
Well, I definitely grant to nonprofits if they're the end user. If they're a nonprofit women's shelter, they are the user, they are the nonprofit. Yes, that's, you know, this particular, these two things where the city is the user. It's a relationship. It's not, they're not the end user. The foundation is not the end user of the pickleball court. And the dog park group, they are, it's a program of the city. So that is a, unless it is, unless it is going to be, that's going to be their product. And some of the guidelines, again, there, it's, I wish I would have brought it with me. So if you say the dog park group, they are now a nonprofit, reasonably, they could be the end user. There's a criteria of questions you ask, and one of them is, if they're the actual end user contractor, whatever, can they sell their product or provide that service to other people, and do they? So going down that list, thinking, our dog park group, I don't think they're going to be a dog park group for other entities.
Mr. President, or Dana, this is, and this subrecipient versus beneficiary guidance is relatively new, right? This is the end of 2023 guidance?
Yes, they updated that, too.
But nothing is stopping, under this system, that if, you know, again, the timeline is there to build, for example, the pickleball, that the money isn't ready to go. This doesn't change any of that. It stays under the current timelines. It just is that matter of when that contract is signed, that we were under the pressure to have it done by the end of '24. We can still have it done by the end of '24. But now, under this, this just buys that extra time for those and still gets those funds that for which it was designated.
Right. Yeah, I'm not yet advocating one way or another, just asking questions. I mean, on dog parks specifically, looking at the lease, which would be an update that I would hope to give the larger group during our regular meeting, that'd be a lease agreement for land, and the group would be contractually obligated, actually, I think, to return, tentatively to return the space back to whatever it looks like now. Yeah, I mean, these are, I don't think, questions. More information, I think, I would need, but I appreciate the update. It was very interesting.
And so Dana, what are you proposing? What kind of timeline would we, would we be reallocating these ARPA funds to capital and reserve funds? I mean, could, does the dog parks group have some time to go through the new guidance and decide whether they would prefer being a subrecipient or beneficiary? Or is this something we need to get on the agenda for next meeting?
I think if that's, if that's the route that you prefer to go, yes, I would definitely do it sooner than later.
Okay.
Because otherwise, you'll be scrambling at the end of the year to see what you're going to do with those funds.
So we're going to do this reallocation in the near term, in the next couple?
Right. And so I guess the confusion is, if we did appropriate all the ARPA money and know that we're going to reallocate some of it, like for capital and that type of scenario, it doesn't mean that we're immediately going to say, the pickleball group or the dog park people, oh, it's already reallocated, you can't have it. It's just an option for us as we get closer to the end of the year. If we take care of it now, obviously, if the lease gets done, or the project is ready to go off the ground, it's still a designation for them.
Yep, I appreciate that. I was just getting to that timeline.
It's confusing. That's why I think weeding through all the guidance, and be my guest, it's always new, it's on a website, it's easy to get to. This, although it seems messy, it's actually the cleanest, easiest way to get those projects completed, I think.
And we would suggest that even for the groups that we are partnering with for both of these projects, that this will be a cleaner option to get that funding.
I think it makes sense.
So you're saying that there are projects in our current line items in our current budget that qualify for ARPA spending, and we could move the entire 446 to those?
Yes.
And then from the budget that we totally control, park 446 earmarked for these future expenses?
Yes.
And eliminate the ARPA red tape for those moving forward?
Yeah, that is, that is the other benefit for those groups. Once it's set to be expensed from one of the reserve funds, it is now not being an ARPA fund expenditure, and it doesn't fall under all the other requirements and reporting, so.
Any other questions? All right. Well, then, I think this would be a good time for us to have some discussions amongst ourselves, particularly about the 379,713 that has yet to be designated.
Now, is that technically in the same category? For example, if we want to recommend designation of any of that 379,000 for projects that can't get done in '24, can the same process be used for that? Are there enough line item, budget items that the additional?
I think there was some talk about that, but again, you've got, you know, these ones here that we already have designated have some organization to them, unless it was something that was completely, I hate to use shovel-ready, because it's an old term, but I think it would be better just to go ahead and designate them for something you can easily obligate before the end of the year. But in theory, it could happen. It's just, you know, not knowing what you're thinking of.
I'm just saying, we can use the, I don't think you understood my question. We can use the same process for this 700, or this 379,000 if we need to.
Yes, you could.
Mark, Mr. President? I have one more question for Dana. Dana, the last slide, second to last slide, the 4, no, excuse me, $47,761 for Marx Radio says, use, your recommendation is that we use for approved ARPA projects. How, why is that different than reallocating? Why isn't listed your proposal to reallocate for capital and reserve funds? Are we adding that, the 47,000 hasn't been, what's it?
It could be in either category, but knowing how our road projects have been coming in, we have the 1.1 million for the ARPA paving this year. I just kind of thought if you left that alone for a while, just to save it for what's already on this sheet, for contingency and overages. But it certainly could be moved to a reserve fund as well.
So if we look at that line item for the Marx radios, we designated 350,000. We've expensed 291.
Yes.
We obligated 10,669, which looks like it's the two lines above that that were short for the inclusive playground and the city park improvements.
Yes.
Okay, so that 1066, $10,000 and change, we're going to use for being, the overages for those above two projects. And then that would leave, that leaves this 47,000, which is not going to be used for Marx radios. Marx radio, that project is done.
Project is done.
Okay. So we're not, we're moving it, you're proposing that we move it to a general capital and reserve fund, but it's not designated for, but not designate it for anything? Just leave it in place for overages on other projects?
On this list, and really, I'm thinking of the paving project.
Paving project.
I'd like to see where that ends up. I think that's kind of where the administration feels, too. It will be, it could be switched to one of those reserve funds if it's not needed for the ARPA paving, but those have come in all over the place. It's just if it's sitting right there in the fund, and it's in, it's actually in the same line item, the same, our budget line item, just to know that if it comes in, if that project comes in higher, it's there to use.
Okay. But it's accurate to say that Safe Roaster School, Brim Road, pickleball, dog parks, we would designate those balances for those projects. We would not designate the Marx radio for anything. We would just leave it alone where it currently is, because we wouldn't have to move it out of the ARPA fund.
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you. No, I'm sorry.
President? I've been trying to find this, you've got it right there. When we did our strategic planning, we, as part of our decisions, we hoped to allocate 150,000 for sidewalks and 100,000 for two studies, the Main Street study being one of them, and then 50,000 for downtown pilot for recycling and composting. So adding that up, that's about 300,000. And we're trying to allocate 379,713 or designate. So it seems that we already kind of talked about this and came up with these, I guess what I'm saying is, that would be possibly a starting point for our discussion, to see if we wanted to adjust the 150 for sidewalks and 100,000 for the two studies and 50,000 for pilot recycling, composting. Does that sound reasonable?
Well, there's a reason I had this. Any other questions before we start talking amongst ourselves? Okay. All right. So Bill has suggested that some of this money be used towards the goals that council set for this year. I'm willing to entertain any conversation around that.
Well, Mr. President, I would prefer that all of it be used for some kind of infrastructure, but I understand there's other interests out there. So I'll support any, the current plan, or even one that pushes more towards infrastructure, especially the sidewalk project, so.
Well, Mr. President, it was my understanding that the administration was going to help us think.
us think through sidewalk... Okay. So Lori?
Do you go to sidewalks now?
Well, I wanted to have a better... So when we unanimously passed in last September these strategic goals, we unanimously agreed to turn this ARPA funding towards these projects. So I very much felt like it was the, you know, administration's job to kind of tell us generally what these projects were going to spend, and it was my understanding that they've done that. So, yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure the word unanimous is accurate.
For strategic goals, really?
Yeah, I don't think we actually took a full head count. We just agreed to certain things. So I don't know the word unanimous.
I don't have my notes, but I did...
Consensus.
All right, all right, all right.
I like the word consensus.
Okay. Majority of us believed that we should turn ARPA funds towards those items.
Correct. A majority.
So I actually am going to say, but I will look at my notes and get back to you, Mark.
All right. All right.
Was there...
We do have an update if you'd like one.
We're ready to hear about sidewalks.
Okay. Well, we do have an update with regard to council's goals after reviewing them and looking at the alignment with the ARPA funding. So that is the lens at which we looked at this. We have put together requests for proposals, thanks to McMurray, our Public Works Director, to fulfill the Main Street study, and we could put that out within a few weeks. And we are, you know, for that $100,000, if that's allocated there. We also have looked at a sidewalk program that would connect areas currently not connected. So where you see stretches of sidewalk, you see not an area of sidewalk and then a continuation of sidewalk. And we would have areas that we would recommend to fulfill that funding. And so we would recommend that we, you know, that you allocate both of those. So that would be $100,000 and $150,000 for $250,000 for those purposes. And we feel confident that we can actually meet the ARPA deadlines to have those funds obligated by the end of this year and get those projects finished here this year in '24. With regard to the recycling program, we do feel that there's not a logical sub-recipient at this point and that executing that would be a pretty complicated process, that obligating those funds would be, you know, a little unknown here. I don't, I'm not sure. Perhaps I would need council to work with us a little bit more to understand what the $50,000 exactly would be for and what we would be looking at. So we don't have a recommended course of action on that one. Instead, we would suggest that if all of the ARPA funds were allocated and that you say any expenditure outside of that $250,000 could be used for the programs listed up there to supplement those, then that would give us that flexibility to finish out all of the current projects. So basically, anything else would only be for existing approved ARPA programming with that extra space there. So whether that's for sidewalks or that's for road paving, that we would use those only for those approved programs.
So that was $150,000 for sidewalks and $100,000 for both of the traffic or engineered traffic and engineering design studies?
Perhaps I don't have that right. My understanding was what we prepared is a, an RFP, a request for proposal for Main Street study on pedestrian and bicycle improvements. And what's the second study?
There were two numbers you gave, the $150,000 and the $100,000. What was the $100,000?
So the $100,000 is for the bicycle and infrastructure pedestrian study on Main Street, and the $150,000 would be for supplemental sidewalks.
Okay. I am caught up.
Again, our view was what could we accomplish within the deadline? We, as an administration, executing your goals and felt that these were achievable goals with the load that we are also carrying with other activities this year in '24.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Mick, if that RFP for the Main Street study went out in the next couple of weeks, how soon would we have that study back, do you think?
We would have it back end of the month and then potentially award engineer in April.
In April?
Yeah. And then the study itself, we would want that back by the end of July.
Okay. Why would we want that back by the end of July? Just that's a normal turnaround?
Yeah, that was, that was, that's a typical turnaround, and then that would give us time, if we were to move forward, to pursue funding options, grants.
Just on the normal cycle?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. There are some grants available end of August if we were to pursue that.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It seems to me that it would be prudent if we are going to do these studies to set aside at least a portion of this to select maybe some early action projects that result from those studies. Maybe everything we get would be outside of this price range, and we would need to reallocate it at that point, but if we're going to do the studies, I would like to have some seed money to start the work.
Well, I'm going to throw something out there just to see if it sticks. I think that we should allocate $150,000 towards the sidewalks. I think we should allocate the $100,000 for the study for Main Street. And if we subtract those, that takes us down to somewhere around, what, $120,000? $129,000?
$129,000.
And then we simply give instruction that that remaining money can be allocated to any program that we have allocated funds for so far. So the study on Main Street would be in that category. Sidewalks, should we want more money for that, would be in that. But also other things we've allocated for, such as, and I know this has been very successful, is the owner-occupied rehab program or any of these other things that don't have a top-end amount that we have put money into, that we just leave that remaining money, and it could go towards cost overruns on something. I hesitate to micromanage too much just because, you know, we don't want to end up messing up and not getting everything spent, so. But that would be a suggestion that I would make, but that is just my suggestion, so.
Mr. President, I have one more thing to add here. If we're looking for ideas, the city of New Bremen, Ohio, I believe it's a city, could be a village, a village, actually. I've been speaking with the village administrator several times over the last couple of years, and they were actually gifted in our investing in a snow machine for their village, which I think is something we should look into.
Well, I mean, that may be something we should look into, but that would be a whole new thing.
It would cost about $50,000.
Are you talking about snow cones?
No, I am talking about covering Connyatt Hill in enough snow to go sledding, while every other city and village around does not have that amenity.
Any other thoughts?
I'm sure that would beat the ARPA criteria.
Well, if we're moving money around, it sounds like we can figure it out.
Yes.
I think if we coordinate this with the administration and have open, frequent updates on the, I'll say contingency of $129,713, but there may be a better term for it, I think that would be good. We have very able staff with Dana and Lori to be able to keep us appraised and warn us if we're getting too close to certain deadlines. And that way, it gives us the kind of leeway. I'm not as concerned about if we end up spending a little bit more on the paving. Well, we would have done paving anyway. We'd move it from some other fund. But this does give us the flexibility if the communication lines are open, and I'm confident that that can be the case. And then as a kind of a side note, Mick, could you set up a sidewalk commission meeting? Because before the list that you all are coming up with, I think one of the main functions of the sidewalk commission is to offer recommendations. I think it would be a good time to have a meeting and just have you go over the list so that the advise and consent can be done, the advise can be done. Is that something you could do, Mick?
Sure. Yep, I'll set that up.
I appreciate that very much.
And then when we get our quarterly financial updates, you could include in those updates progress on this. That doesn't mean that should something be more time-sensitive, that we can't wait till a quarterly update, you can come to us anytime with relevant information, but...
Sure.
At the very least, quarterly, let us know how things are going.
Yeah, absolutely. And just could add, once you get these designations that you're talking about, the study and the sidewalks, what it really looks like for you all is we add it to this worksheet. And then the process of getting it allocated is by appropriating the ARPA funds. And once you do that, those are really the two things that we need action on. It's that simple, based on what you're talking about, so.
Right.
Now, the, excuse me, the, going out to bid for the downtown or the Main Street study, if it comes in below the $100,000, then that would be put into, the overage would be put into the contingency fund? Okay. And what capital projects? You used the example of fire truck. Do you have a list of capital projects that we could shift?
Well, I think anything in our budget this year, but the portion of the fire truck that is coming out of our coffers is close to $500,000, so we're pretty well set to take care of it.
Oh, so what you're saying is it doesn't have to be the entire fire truck. It could be, you know, the portion of it.
Well, yeah, it's a portion that the city, we were going to lease, do a lease buy, and the portion that we'll have to expend out of actual cash is close to $500,000.
Okay. So that would be the administration's recommendation to, if we did the shifting, as was described, that it would be for the fire truck? Or is there something else?
I don't know that it matters.
Yeah, I just, I think that's an example that we really wouldn't have to pin down one particular item.
Isn't it just that it's a project that meets the criteria of ARPA, right? It doesn't really matter.
Right. And all of our capital projects do. So I'm, maybe Lori, did you want to talk on it? Okay.
Okay. But you'd let us know.
Mm-hmm.
Then the only, I guess the only other thing that I have to say until I think of something else is, it was alluded to earlier, and that is we have had a good impact with some of our grants and rehabilitation, et cetera, of housing stock. Is that something that, I know Matt's not here, he'd be a good one to ask, but is, yeah, Martha, is that something that could use some more money?
Well, it could always use money, but you have to remember those are the timeline criteria, and we're talking $10,000 at a pop. So he will use everything that's in there, but if you keep dumping more and more money, we do run the risk with our CDBG funds that we can't get them used.
Got it.
It's a balancing act.
So if we were, as a, if we, as a council, were to say, in this contingency fund, a priority would be to make sure that that pipeline is flowing and if, you know, we can't put too much in, but make sure that there's enough that we can actually have a positive effect on the community, would that be that kind of flexibility? Would that be something that you could work with, Martha?
There is, how much? $293,000 that's still listed as obligated.
Okay. So it would take a while?
It would, yeah.
Got it. Okay.
And we don't want to turn down money for housing rehab, but it is really a balancing act at this point. If it was further out, if it was other years...
Got it.
But we're very appreciative of the money that you guys have allocated.
And I can tell you from seeing you all in action, I'm very appreciative of your ability to balance things and allocate the money to where the need is. It's an amazing job.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
All right. Any other, any other thoughts before I make a recommendation for us to make a decision?
I was going to say, I think your recommendation has merit, and I support.
All right. Well, let's talk about the snow machine. Is that something we are wanting to consider?
Are we hoping to get all of this done this evening?
I'm just mostly concerned about the snow machine at the moment.
How concerned are you about the snow machine?
Well, I don't want to leave it hanging out there.
Would you like me to get you some more information, set up a field trip, maybe?
Maybe, to New Bremen?
Yeah.
Sure. That's God's country down there.
It's something that other communities are looking at. I don't think it should be lost on any of us, particularly those of us with small children, that the number of snow days we've had this year is almost zero. A lot of reasons for that. We've passed resolutions on some of them that I'm sure are making a huge difference, but one thing I think we can do to maintain this fun, family-oriented, free activity for very low cost would be to look at making this investment.
I think the...
That is the extent of the pitch I'm prepared to give today.
All right. I think the community would certainly buy into it, or at least children, if we would periodically put the snow machine right outside the school superintendent's front window.
There could be implications for the downtown holiday parade. I think you're joking, Bill, but I think we should brainstorm other ways we could use this to improve community events.
Right now, I'm personally not in favor of spending $50,000 on a snow machine.
That seems reasonable.
I'm not saying that I wouldn't be in the future, but does anyone object to me removing that from an option we're considering right now? Okay. In that case, my recommendation would be that we ask the administration to go ahead with legislation that allocates $150,000 for sidewalks, up to $100,000 for studies for pedestrians and bicycles and all of that on Main Street, and that the remaining funds be held for either overages on projects that have not yet come in, or if we get down to the wire and they need to be spent, that they be spent on projects where we know we can get the money out the door in time. That is my recommendation for what we do with these remaining funds.
I second that.
Would you have a part of your recommendation movement of the $150 pickleball, $150 dog park into the capital?
Yes, the reallocation of the, of these funds, pickleball, dog park, the...
$446,660.
Right. That would be included, yes. Do you still second me, Joel?
I still second you.
I guess we can take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Anything else for the good of the order before I adjourn the committee of the whole meeting?
Mr. President?
Yep.
I think we're getting better at this. I think we're getting better at this. I also wanted to thank the administration for laying everything out so that we could come to good decisions. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, well, thank you all for being here. Sit around for about 12 minutes and we'll start over.